Good evening and welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Some items are study items that are before the Planning Commission where we will not take formal action, while other items before us are public hearings where we encourage the public to testify. You can do that here at City Hall. You can also do that remotely by following the instructions on your screen. Some items the Planning Commission has final decision-making authority, while in other items this Planning Commission will act in an advisory capacity and the City Council will have the final decision. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer residents of the city of Bloomington. Each Planning Commissioner has been appointed to serve a three-year term for a maximum of two terms. We have all seven Planning Commissioners present here, so we do have a quorum this evening. As we begin, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this evening, as we typically do, with item number one. That item is the City of Bloomington City Fleet Maintenance Facility. The City of Bloomington is the applicant, and Ms. Emily Hesbeck, you have the staff report for us.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, so, the first item is, maybe going to move forward. Final site and building plans to construct an approximately 40,000-square-foot city fleet maintenance facility, there we go, located at 1800 West 96th Street. Planning Commission has final decision-making authority on this application. The site outlined in red is zoned I-2, limited industry, and it's guided industrial and public. West 96th Street is to the south and James Avenue to the east. The city also owns the property directly to the south across West 96th Street. So here is our rendering of the proposed building design. The building's exterior is primarily composed of precast concrete panels with additional architectural elements, including aluminum and translucent wall paneling. All building setbacks have been met as well as building size requirements. This slide shows the site plan. So there are a few things to know about the site plan. So there's a condition to ensure that parking islands are constructed at the end of each row of parking spaces. Additionally, engineering has recommended reducing the number of driveway accesses to two or three rather than four. And then, lastly, for this screen, the number of parking stalls does not meet code requirement. Where 79 spaces are required, 62 are present. The applicant will need to provide proof of parking for the remaining spaces. The applicant must demonstrate a reduced need and identify areas for future parking if it's necessary for proof of parking. There must be a site plan submitted and filed with records for the property showing the proof of parking. And, again, like I mentioned earlier, the site is directly north of another city-owned building where additional parking supply is available. So a last few notes about landscaping, screening, and lighting. The civil plans do not show the full 20-foot landscaping yard that is required along West 96th Street. A condition has been included in the staff report that the correction be made prior to permit issuance. Otherwise, the landscaping plan has the correct number of trees and shrubs. The trash and recycling needs to be fully screened within an enclosed structure, which is not currently proposed but is a condition prior to permit issuance. And the lighting plan will need to be adjusted a little bit to meet code requirements. So this slide shows the required four findings, and staff was able to meet the four findings on the screen, again, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Therefore, staff does recommend approval, and I'm available for questions, as are the applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Hesbeck. We'll start with questions for staff. Commissioner White.
Thank you. I just had a question that's not really related to the permit tonight, but I'm curious. At one point, there was discussion about putting solar on this building as one of the city buildings. This was several years ago, so I may be out of date. I'm just curious whether that's been explored as an option.
Chair, Commissioner White, I would invite maybe Deb to answer that.
Hello. Deb Williams from Public Works, capital project manager for the city. And we actually build the roof out to hold solar, and we actually talked about it today in our meeting, that we're really excited. Part of the design is so that all the mechanical units are on one end of the building. So this is probably going to be one of the biggest buildings we have to be able to put solar on. We don't typically do it as part of the original build. You kind of want to let your building sit for a year before you start putting other things on top of it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, my packet, as always. I just need to start downloading them. It's a monosloped roof, right, on this building? The plan?
Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, I'm going to let Deb answer that again, sorry.
Sorry, Deb.
Mike Shaline, principal and project manager for JOG Architects.
So, the roof of the proposed building, we're talking about solar, I was just, I had in my brain that the high side of the roof was on the south side, so that the roof slope would kind of be like the opposite of what you would want for solar.
We have a flat roof on this building.
Okay, perfect. No more questions, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before they sit down? Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair. Wait, why wait a year? Is there like, what's the wisdom behind that?
Part of that is for warranty. So, we like to let the roof sit so that if there are any issues with the construction that it just pertains to the installation and not to us adding something else to the roof.
Thank you.
Final questions? Thank you. The City of Bloomington is the applicant on this application, so we will move then to a public hearing, which I will now open. I will ask if there's anybody in the audience here in the chambers who wishes to testify on this item. Seeing no one coming forward, do we have anybody online?
All participants online are staff.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I will look then for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 7-0. We move then to discussion. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Seems like a relatively straightforward application. Seems like staff did a great job in preparing the report, and I'm in favor of approving this.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. If there are no other comments, I would look for a motion. Commissioner White.
In case number PL 2025-113, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plans to construct an approximately 40,000-square-foot city fleet maintenance facility located at 1800 West 96th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the motion as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 7-0. This is a final decision by the Planning Commission unless an appeal is received by the City Council at 4:30 PM on September 23rd. Thank you very much. We will move then to item number two, which is another public hearing where, again, the City of Bloomington is the applicant to discuss the Normandale Lake District Plan Amendment. Mr. Cassidy, you have the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm going to have Jeremy Melquist as well. We're kind of sharing presentation here.
Yeah, Jeremy Melquist, civil engineer. We're here today to talk about the Normandale Lake District Plan Amendment. So first, we'll go over project background, the intersection safety study, and recommended intersection alternative at 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard, the Normandale Lake District Plan Amendment, and then staff recommendations. There you go. So, the project background, the district plan had dedicated a pedestrian bridge over 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard. The estimated cost for that was $5 million, but the bridge no longer meets a cost-benefit analysis. As you can see in the picture to the left there, there's an option one and option two for the bridge. The red, the red shows the approach. Rams to the bridge extend pretty far to the east and west, so this would create significant impacts to the surrounding areas, the wetlands and the park areas. The bridge is also projected to have a low utilization due to increased, the increased travel time for bikes and peds. It'd be about four times the crossing time versus if you cross at the intersection. So with that, our consultant, Bolton and Mink, had identified a few upgrade intersection improvements. Instead of the pedestrian bridge, the initial alternatives were presented in study sessions at Planning Commission City Council back in June, and feedback from those and feedback from Hennessy County and city staff were incorporated into our recommended alternative. So here's our recommended alternative. This combines two previous alternatives. It reduces the crossing distance for bikes and peds on the south and east legs of the intersection by widening the median refuge island on both of those approaches. It also modifies the right turn lanes on each of the corners, slowing down vehicle traffic and forcing vehicles to yield to the adjacent roadways that they're approaching. And this, this alternative also narrows down the entire intersection and it addresses concerns that were brought up by Hennessy County regarding intersection operations. The estimated cost for this is 3.5 million. One thing to note is that we are going to be doing a corridor-wide study on 84th Street in the next one or two years. So, if there's any bicycle facilities that are recommended with, with that alternative, we'll incorporate, we can, we can change this alternative with, with that corridor study. So, this, this isn't a set in stone. The construction will still be seven and 10 years down the road for, for this project, so this, this can change in the future. With that, I'll pass it over to Dakota.
Yeah, so the second component of this project is that it also requires an amendment to our Normandale Lake District Plan. There's not a set process in our code around this, but we wanted to just, out of wanting, out of a case of precaution, to have a public hearing with the Planning Commission and City Council to kind of follow similar processes that we go through with a comprehensive plan amendment or a more detailed district plan update. So this is a pretty minor amendment, but the public hearing component relates to this. The Normandale Lake District Plan was adopted in May of 2008 and then was, had a major update in December 2017. The pedestrian bridge over the Normandale and 84th intersection was designated as a capital improvement project in the Norman, Normandale Lake District Plan. And so regardless if we would build it or not, because it's in the plan as a capital improvement project, the city has to continue to program that financially. And so, kind of going through this process and determining we want to do more of an at-grade improvement, staff then determined that we should remove the ped bridge from the Normandale Lake District Plan so that we can stop programming for it and then reallocate those funds to other projects in the district and other capital projects. So there are kind of a number of pretty minor grammatical amendments that were shared in the staff packet. I just wanted to highlight kind of the three primary amendments that relate to removing the reference to the pedestrian bridge and then replacing it with more general language around improving the bicycle and pedestrian environment. So, those three key pieces are found on page 2.16, 2.17, and then page 3.4 of the district plan. So this one on the screen is from page 2.16. It's, again, just removing the title of pedestrian bridge and replacing that with "improving bicyclist and pedestrian environment." And then there was one sentence there that made reference to an elevated pedestrian crossing, so we're just removing that from the sentence. On page 2.17 is probably the, the biggest or primary text amendment, so it's replacing this paragraph that talks about the east-west pedestrian bridge and replaces it with a paragraph about pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And a lot of that comes from the, the safety study that was provided, that was completed by Bolton and Mink to just kind of talk about future at-grade improvements that would help improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. And then finally, on page 3.4 is that list of projects. And so we have the pedestrian bridge listed there, and so this amendment is just to remove it from that plan list, to kind of, again, take it out of our capital improvement plan programming. And so with that, we have two motions here for the Planning Commission. The first one relates to the pedestrian safety study and just adopting the findings from that, and then the second one is the motion related to the actual text amendment in the Normandale Lake District Plan. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy and Melquist. I would like to start with a question. It was referenced, and I just want to clarify. So, recommending an option, any option, whatever, for the pedestrian improvements here, are, does that authorize the project for construction if the council approves that? Or is it, we're putting this in the long-term plan and down the road, there's a official authorization of it once funding is secured, et cetera?
Yes, Chair Cockton, yes. It will, it'll be put into the CIP for a future project. Funding was still going to be identified for it, but, yeah, like I said, it's going to be seven to 10 years down the road before construction actually happens.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Linay.
Thank you, Chair. Just a clarification also. So, recognizing that the budget or the estimated cost for the bridge was $5 million, estimated cost for this 3.5 million, that 1.5 million, understanding that the money isn't actually there yet, is it still generally reserved for use within the Normandale Lake District? Or would that 1.5 million in quote-unquote savings could be used anywhere in the city? Thanks.
Julie, yes. If you want to speak to that on the abatement district, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the funding for the, these projects is coming from what we call our Normandale Lake Tax Abatement District. And so there is a percentage of your tax, of Bloomington's tax levy that goes to fund this tax abatement, and so that money would just be removed from the tax levy. If you've heard, that council's been working really hard to reduce that levy. Part of that is related to reducing the expenses in the Normandale Lake District.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair. Can alternative number four, is that possible to be brought up? I know someone testified over email, and they were in support of that. I just wanted to like, see that one more time. Okay. And then, city staff is recommending alternative number two, correct?
Correct. Yep. Alternative number two was the one that was selected as the recommended alternative. There it is.
Is there estimated cost for alternative number four as well? I know we're not supposed to focus on the cost, but just...
It would, it would be around the same, 3.5 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, since it was brought up, the question of whether we should focus on cost or not, I believe this application is slightly different than other applications we typically see where the Planning Commission is asked not to, to take cost into consideration when we look at an application, but is this a different case than that?
Yeah, Chair Cockton, thanks for the question. So the Planning Commission is the established advisory commission and board related to transportation matters, and on these types of applications, you know, you're not reviewing a narrow set of findings of fact like we were in item number one this evening, which are established in the zoning code. So technically, you can take cost implications under consideration with it on matters related to advisory questions pertaining to transportation, recognizing that the City Council is the sole authority related to fiduciary or fiscal decision-making for the city.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Was a tunnel option explored for any amount of time? Ms. Long, thank you for coming, thank you for sticking around.
Sure. Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, a tunnel had been included in a previous park plan years and years ago, but if you notice that there are two water bodies nearby, we in engineering have always told them that we thought that was not a very useful idea, that we'd spend a lot of time with it either being flooded and closed like the existing crossing underneath that's further south, or, so we, there has been different times where a tunnel has been included, but we don't support that because it's not usable 12 months out of the year.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much for that report. In this case, the City of Bloomington, again, is the applicant, so there will be no presentation from the applicant again, and we will move then to the public hearing, which I will open now, asking if there is anyone in the chambers who wishes to testify on this item. Seeing no one coming forward, is there anybody online?
All participants online are staff.
Very well. I will look then for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 7-0, and we will move then to discussion. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. As much as I'd like to see a bridge, if it doesn't, you know, pan out on a cost-benefit analysis, I am generally in favor of, you know, one of the proposed options. I believe that, you know, we're still figuring that out. There's obviously a recommended option. Probably, time will tell as we build this out in the next, was it, seven to 10 years? And so, I'm overall in favor of making these amendments to the Normandale Lakes District Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. When we brought this, when this was brought before us as a study item, I've made this comment a bunch of times, but I always just get a little bit uneasy as we're looking at, okay, is it option one, two, whatever? And I just, I've always felt a little uncomfortable up here as a layperson saying what traffic option we should go with, and I really rely on our traffic consultants and engineers to make that decision, so I really don't have a lot of feelings on whether this modified alternative two is the right thing or not, because I don't have expertise in it, so I'm really going to mostly decline comment on that. The one comment I will make is it's starting to get awfully expensive. You know, we were talking about a bridge that was $5 million, and now we're putting in significantly less than that, and it's $3.5 million. And so if, you know, I can appreciate that we're getting rid of the bridge because I agree it seemed like no one was going to use it anyway because it takes longer to get there and people are just going to cross the street. When you look at the traffic study, the, the data is not showing that there's a crash problem here. And so, you get in one of these really difficult conversations of, well, what's the price of safety even if it's just one accident? And so you kind of leave yourself in this impossible situation of like, if something bad did happen, you're just, why didn't we spend the $1 million? My gosh, what a mistake. But, you know, I think when you look at it, this ranks below average on crash rate, and we're talking about $3.5 million to, to do this, and if it's, if it makes it more comfortable for people or encourages people to use the intersection more as a pedestrian, I think that's great, but could $3.5 million go towards other things that make pedestrians more comfortable in other locations? This just seems like such a behemoth intersection we're taking on here, and if there's not a problem, I don't know if this is the right place to spend $3.5 million. And as Mr. Johnson said, really, that's up to our elected officials ultimately, I think, to decide where they want to spend our residents' tax dollars, but, you know, I'm sitting here going, man, $3.5 million for this seems like an awful lot. And also, I get it, like, public entities, that's the scale of the cost of things is way out of whack from what we as just regular people understand. Like, you're playing in the big sandbox, I get it, roads are expensive, construction's expensive for municipalities, I get it, but, again, I just, it just feels like to me that $3.5 million could go towards other things than, than this. So, I guess that's where I'm at with it. Commissioner Linay.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree. I'm a heavy, heavy, heavy user of this area, including crossing the intersection on foot and on bike regularly, and as much as I would love to have a bridge there, I think for the cost, I think it falls into the perfect example of something that would have been great had it been built into the original plan, you know, 30 years ago, but the costs at this point, I just don't think align with what, how the city should be spending money. I think there's much greater need, even in recreational spaces. I think that same money could go a lot further in other parts of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to clarify, so, you know, I, I appreciate very much the concern about whether this is the right place to invest money. I think, you know, it's $3.5 million now, who knows what it'll be in seven to 10 years when it's actually time to, to look at actual plans. I appreciate the intent of it, wanting to make, anywhere we can get folks out of their cars and on foot or bike or other methods of transportation, I think we want to do that, and it's worthy of an investment. I do wonder, though, in terms of just the logistics of the, the issue before us this evening, how, I, I think we all agree, I've heard that we all agree that we are fine with taking the pedestrian bridge out of the plan. I think it seems that the question before us is, are we comfortable putting in language about having other? about having other alternatives? And so I guess I'm not sure if we could get some clarification from staff. If we want the bridge out, but aren't sure we want to replace it with this exactly, is the wording of the proposed recommendation from the staff recommendations still accurate?
Mr. Johnson, any thoughts there?
Yeah Chair Cookden, Commissioner White, I'll invite Dakota to add on to anything he feels is appropriate as the primary drafter. But from my reading of the language, I think it's neutral enough to set the table for a variety of different improvements. While I agree with the sentiment that the crash thankfully levels are lower than maybe you'd expect for an intersection of that size, I think the city is working on other projects too. To your point Commissioner White, try and improve the, particularly the bicycle environment in that area, looking at a cycle track along 84th Street as well, I believe, in the coming years. So I think the language that Dakota's put together is neutral enough to kind of just set the table, in my view.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner White.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, with that in mind, I, you know, I think it's, I'm fine with putting the language in. I think that, you know, we've kind of registered our concerns. I think that the fact that they're going to be doing a corridor study over the next couple of years, this could very well change tremendously before it's ever built. So as long as the language that's being proposed really is not restrictive to this particular solution, but more the intent of wanting to make it more pedestrian and bicycle friendly, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Johnson, anything else?
Chair Cookden, if I can add one thing, and this is the, and the person in the room who is more the subject matter expert here would be Julie Long again, but I would say that the city on an annual basis in reviewing its capital improvement plan is constantly reshuffling projects according to priority of what they think the greatest need is for the use of these dollars. So that's an exercise that's ongoing and happens as part of the adoption of every year CIP.
Mr. Johnson or Mr. Cassidy, the modified proposal number two, is that a graphic that would appear in the Normandale Boulevard District, sorry, the Normandale District Plan or no?
Yeah Chair Cookden, Planning Commission, it would not. So it was kind of intentionally left to be general to just say we're making improvements to bicycle and pedestrian safety, but by adopting this motion or, you know, so regardless if it's modified number two or alternative four, those images would not be in the district plan and wouldn't tie us to that specific design.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Commissioner Isa.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I kind of agree with Chair Cookden and Commissioner Linay on the kind of concern for cost. Well first, like, thank you to like city staff, Julie Long, the whole team, you guys are amazing. But like with this, if it's three point five million now and it's in seven years, or the build would be in seven to 10 years construction, it may be a lot higher because inflation and, you know, just costs going up potentially. And so the number one thing I would say is if there isn't like a huge concern in terms of danger, yeah, I just wouldn't feel comfortable like, at least me personally, if it was my decision solely investing that much, you know, into it. And I do frequent this intersection a lot, and especially during like traffic hours. So I'm very familiar with the intersection. And yeah, that's, and I had a question if, whenever I could.
Please.
Yeah. So I think Nick, you said the dollars, where the dollars are going is reviewed by staff every, for this specific area every, annually, is that what you said?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah Chair Cookden, Commissioner Isa, ultimately the city council holds a public hearing and adopts the annual capital improvement plan. It's a 10-year plan, they do that on an annual basis. So the city council is making that decision through the adoption of the capital improvement plan.
Okay. All right, so the planning commission doesn't really have a say or anything in that?
The Chair Cookden, Commissioner Isa, the planning commission does have a role to evaluate the, the CIP, the capital improvement plan to ensure that it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So that will be a review that will come before you. It's not a public hearing, the public hearing is at the city council. But the planning commission does have a role in verifying that the plan is consistent with the comp plan.
Great, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Summers.
Thank you Chair. When I look at the pedestrian safety study, there is a part of it that is the pedestrian piece and a part that is vehicles waiting in traffic. So when I look at the no build traffic operations analysis, it seems as though the alternatives decrease traffic in ways that would be beneficial for people who are driving through that area, but also pedestrians and bicycle lists. Because my opinion is that when people are waiting in traffic, they are potentially more hurried to get through an intersection or make different decisions than if they are driving with less impediments. I am curious over time to see how the proposed RRFB and other pedestrian safety items work on that corner. After seeing that this intersection hasn't been that much of a safety risk in the past, it feels to me like that feels like more of a measured option. And I do echo some of the sentiments of not being an expert in this work and being so appreciative of the information set before me, but that's what I'm seeing with what is in front of me.
Thank you. Commissioner Munster.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I have, I think what's going to, excuse me, what's going to turn into a little bit of a series of questions. So with the appreciation that we're looking at a seven to 10-year window on anything, and that there is going to be an intervening corridor study for bicycle pedestrian improvements, in practical terms, what we're doing here tonight is just a placeholder to take the bridge out, correct?
Well, we have two motions that are recommended before us. I think the second one is definitively taking the bridge out. It's the way I read it, and I welcome staff to correct me on this, is that the first motion that's recommended before us is signaling that we're interested in looking at doing something here.
And the reason I ask is, if we're taking the bridge out and that's removing that five million dollar ballpark obligation from the, the area, are we putting in a three point five million dollar obligation in its place? Or are we just putting the concept of improvements in its place?
Mr. Cassidy.
Yeah Chair Cookden, Commissioner Munster, for this proposed amendment, it would be the latter. So we're just proposing to take out the, the ped bridge specifically, which would then take out that five million dollar cost or whatever it is to reduce the tax levy. And then there's no like replacement of a project in there yet. It's more because there is this outstanding corridor study and depending on what we want to do, it was just replaced with more general language to, to make pedestrian and bicycle improvements throughout the district, but also at this intersection.
So, I'm sorry, just to be sure that I'm clear, the five million comes out and does not get replaced with another number today?
Chair Cookden, Commissioner Munster, I would just say from the, the district plan perspective, no. But I would say maybe Julie, something to add with the tax abatement district that's related, there's money there.
Correct. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Munster, in order to do the financial model that finance is doing of the tax abatement money, they would remove the five million, but they would leave that three point five as a placeholder. It doesn't have to be specifically for these improvements that you've shown, but it is three point five million for a future bike and ped improvement. So if you are not inclined to have that go forward, you should provide direction that you don't, we should remove all five million and go down to zero.
Got it. No, I just wanted to be sure I understood where, what was moving where.
Well Commissioner, it sounds like that's the question before us, is do we want to leave that placeholder of three and a half million in for this tax abatement planning or not? Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it's a safe intersection, it's fine, it's not the most heavily utilized piece. I bike by, I bike through this intersection a lot. I think some improvement might be great. I would defer to the experts on if traffic calming measures or reducing lanes would be helpful, but I find myself sometimes coming, if I'm going to Normandale Lake Banshell, I find myself going down Poplar Bridge, biking with a kid bike trailer up a super huge hill, and then coming up Normandale to get to the Banshell to avoid the intersection. And so I would say I think we should, I like the language that's in here on page 55 of the packet. I think that keeping dollars in there for pedestrian safety throughout the district that can kind of be used and deployed in various ways is a, is a measured approach to taking, you know, taking away the bridge. Thank you.
Commissioner Linay.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Cunningham. I think the other thing is, is it's so hard to know right now what the traffic is going to look like there with, you know, the 494, I mean until the 494 work is done, so many people taking American Boulevard with the traffic corridor study and the work on 35W. I think it would be foolish to take all of the money away now, if only due to the uncertainty a few years from now, when we may realize it's even more important or urgent to get something in there at this point. I don't know if anything needs to be done now, but I think keeping the placeholder would be prudent.
Commissioner Isa.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I also agree. I just think that if, if there is a way we could vote on keeping dollars for the Normandale District area or plan specifically, that'd be good. But if we're voting specifically on the intersection of West 84th Street and Normandale, I'm leaning not in support if it's specifically that, but I am in supportive. Does that make sense?
I think so. Ms. Long, keeping this language in there, that targets that three and a half million dollars specifically for this intersection? Or is it for the district as a whole?
As I read it, it says for pedestrian safety, short and long-term, in the intersection of West 84th and Normandale. So it would be in that area. So if you wanted to change the area, that would be an option.
Commissioner White.
Thank you Chair. I, at this point, I'm honestly inclined to leave it where it is, only because until we have the corridor study done and until we have more information, I wouldn't want to pull it out and leave it in the, in the ether, so to speak. So I, I guess I would be comfortable with keeping it tied to West 84th and Normandale Boulevard for now, but I would like to revisit it after the corridor study.
I think I'm in Commissioner, in agreement with you Commissioner White. If I'm interpreting this correctly, what we're really doing is making sure we have the dollars available for a future project. So we're collecting that tax now to make sure that when we do want to pull the trigger, that money has been there and had been collected so we can afford the project. And so ultimately, we may not decide to do this project and I don't think that's the worst thing. This can, this can always change after we do the corridor study. I suspect when that corridor study does occur, this will get revisited. And so I don't know if it's my favorite thing in the world, but I don't think there's a great deal of risk in keeping it there. And so I'm comfortable with the way it's currently being shown. Commissioner Isa.
Just to play, thank you Chair, just play devil's advocate. What if down the line, we identified within the next seven to 10 years, if we're still here, which we won't be, but hypothetically, right, identified that another area where those dollars could be used better potentially, right? In, in the obviously Normandale Lake District. Would we be hard set because we voted on this then?
I don't think so. I think we could go through the exact process that's here this evening. You just do an amendment to that, that district plan.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I think I'm in agreement then with Commissioner White and Chair Cookden, so thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I would look for a motion. Commissioner Cunningham.
In case number 2025-108, I move to recommend the city council approve and adopt the findings of the pedestrian safety study, which includes short-term and long-term pedestrian improvements to the intersection of West 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the first motion regarding the pedestrian safety study. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. In case number 2025-108, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving the Normandale Lake District Plan Update Amendment, removing the reference to the pedestrian bridge over the West 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard intersection.
Second.
We have a motion and a second regarding the pedestrian bridge at this intersection. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also passes seven zero. This will go before the city council as a public hearing on October 13th. Thank you staff.
Thank you.
We will move then to item number three. Again, the city of Bloomington is the applicant and we are here to discuss the I-494 Project Two update and municipal consent request information. Ms. Marone is here for the staff report.
Good evening Commissioner. I'm Amy Marone, Assistant Traffic Engineer with Bloomington Engineering. And we have Andrew Lutaya with Mendat. He wears a few hats at Mendat, but in this regards, he's representing the coordinator for the 494 corridor project. He led us through the entire 494 vision, starting back in 2018. And the city was a part of that full process of developing the vision. And what he's going to do tonight is share information about Project Two that is in the works and being planned, that will help realize that, the rest of that full vision. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. As Amy introduced me, Andrew Lutaya, I've been at Mendat Metro District since 2013. I've been working as a project manager for pretty much during all the time at the, at Mendat. So for tonight's presentation, yes, we are starting to work through with our partners, local partners requesting for municipal consent. So for my presentation today, I'll give a short discussion on what state statutes require Mendat to request for municipal consent. Give a brief on what the corridor vision is and how Mendat has broken it out in, in, in delivering that corridor vision. Local participation for phase two, specifically for phase two, we already went through phase one that is currently under construction. So I point out a few items that we are seeking the city's cost share on. Brief on the proposed traffic staging and management of traffic during construction of the second phase of the corridor vision. And the last couple of slides, we'll be talking through where we are at with the project development process and schedule. So for, why I'm standing in front of you today is that yes, we are required by state law to request for municipal consent anytime a Mendat project is going through a municipality and it is either changing access to and from the highway, if it is increasing or decreasing capacity on the highway, and all if we are, if the project is required, if the project is going to be acquiring permanent right of way. So all these three are triggered for the city of Bloomington. There's quite a bit of work that we need around 82nd Street. And that work does rebuild the interchange and it changes some of the access to and from 35W. As you might be aware, the 494 corridor vision did call for expansion of the highway by adding EZ Pass lanes, so another trigger for municipal consent. And yes, to get all that added pavement, the storm water management that is required, we would need to acquire permanent right of way. So corridor vision in summary really was three pieces, as I've mentioned, EZ Pass, running from Highway 169 all the way through Highway 77 on the east side, reconstructing and reconfiguring the I-35W and 494 interchange. And then east of 35W, we were also altering access, we eliminating direct access from Nicolet and 12th Avenue and adding all that highway access to Portland Avenue. So most, a big chunk of all these, of those three categories is. So very quick highlight on what Project One entails, mostly on the west side of thirty-five W with pavement, reconstructions, configuring, reconfiguring a portion of the thirty-five W four ninety-four interchange. So the east half with a new directional ramp from northbound thirty-five W to westbound four ninety-four. We, as I mentioned, reconstructing mainline pavement on the east side of thirty-five W, reconstructing the Twelfth, Portland and Nicolet Avenue bridges. We also included a new pedestrian bridge just east of Portland Avenue, and proposal of that bridge came from such interactions with communities and city staff. There's been quite a bit of multimodal improvements that have been, that are incorporated in the corridor vision and also quite a bit that is or going to be built as part of Project One, but also as part of Project Two. So construction status-wise for Project One, if you're out, if you're sure that you've been traversing this corridor, quite a bit of work is done. West of thirty-five W, most of that payment should be concluded towards the end of this year. So hopefully, in the construction field, trying to keep the snow away, that we can keep working, right? So ninety or ninety-five percent of that payment work will be done before the end of this year. For next year, most of the work is going to be concentrated on the east side of thirty-five W. The Portland Avenue Bridge will be completed this year, where, as I mentioned previously, all the highway access from east of thirty-five W will be on Lindell Avenue and Portland Avenue. So once Portland comes in, then we will tear down Nicolet and Twelfth and start rebuilding those. So all that work is now, the Nicolet and Twelfth Avenue Bridges are planned for 2026. Overall, completion for Phase One is September, end of September, 2026. And happy to report that project is seeming to keep, to be on track to meet that deadline. So coming into Phase Two, as I mentioned, you'd see that Phase Two is, yeah, it is a conclusion of the corridor vision on the east, on the west side of thirty-five W, west of Highway a hundred, the EZ Pass lanes will be mostly on the, so we're going to be taking out the grass median west of East Bush Lake Road and paving, paving that over to introduce the new EZ Pass lanes in that area. West, east of thirty-five W, it's expansion on the outside, but because the pavement is also a little old, we are also going to be tearing all that out and repaving that pavement all the way from thirty-five W to east of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. On thirty-five W, we are also reconstructing mainline pavement from Eighty-Second Street to Seventy-Sixth Street, and also coming in and completing the eastbound four ninety-four to southbound movements, including the reconstruction of the Eighty-Second Street Bridge. I've mentioned this also, the last bullet point on that page, we are also including multimodal improvements in the second phase, quite a bit on Eighty-Second, from Knox Avenue west of thirty-five W all the way is to Fremont. I think it's east of Fremont as well. There is improvements along the frontage roads east of Twelfth Avenue for multimodal City of Bloomington, local cost participation, and it's listed as a cost participation because there's quite a bit of cost share that Mendat is going to be taking on. So but for the city of Bloomington, these items that you're seeing here are items that are falling outside Mendat right-of-way. So anything within Mendat right-of-way will be paid for by Mendat, but outside, we can't. So we are limited in doing that, so that's why I would request for the cities to cover those costs. But I would also mention, just to clarify, that any work that is caused by Mendat on the local system will be covered and paid for by Mendat. France Avenue, we are replacing the signals on France Avenue, so by regular cost participation policies, there is a cost share that goes to the city. So whoever is responsible for the movement, we call them legs on the intersection, they cover those costs. Streetlights, through coordination with city staff, they have requested for streetlights along Eighty-Second and above five lights, so that's a number that we're estimating for that to be. And then engineering and contingencies, a hundred and sixty thousand. But all these, once the project is let, will be refined and the actual cost share will be based on what the preferred contractor, the preferred bidder, bids for the work. Okay, proposed MOT for Phase Two. Similar to Phase One, we are anticipating a four-year construction window for Phase Two. Again, similar to Phase One, we are proposing to retain three lanes in each direction on both four ninety-four and thirty-five W. Yes, those lanes might be narrow, but hoping that traffic is still able to traverse the construction area easier than limiting lanes. I'll put a caveat on that bullet point, that there are a few sections where we might, we might not be able to meet this requirement. We have identified one just east of Highway seventy-seven under the Twenty-Fourth Avenue bridges. We might have a constraint in there where we have to narrow it down to two lanes in each direction, but the duration for that constraint, we are assuming it to be one construction season. And part of the reason is that because of, we, as part of the corridor vision and accommodating EZ Pass lanes, we have to replace the Highway seventy-seven bridges. So to stage the replacement of the Highway seventy-seven bridges of a four ninety-four, we will be limiting some space on mainline four ninety-four. That's why we are constraining space there. Similarly, along thirty-five W just north of Eighty-Second, there is a section that for about ninety days, we would have to constrain the number of lanes that are going through that section. So twenty twenty-seven, so the project is proposed to be let, and the next slide, we kind of dive on in detail about project delivery schedule. Project is planned to be let in the fall of 2026. Twenty twenty-seven, the first year will be focused on utility relocation. There is quite a bit of city utilities that need to be relocated to move out of the way of the mainline work. Then twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty, that's where the major mainline construction will be happening. And it will be happening concurrently, both on four ninety-four and on thirty-five W. So our project delivery schedule started this second phase in earnest in September of 2024. As Amy mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, really the corridor vision, we started the entire process in 2018. And from 2018, we let the first phase in 2022. We were lucky that last year, we got funding for additional funding from the federal government that allowed us to complete the rest of the corridor vision. We have worked through a couple of items or tasks for the project. Where we are at, we are closer to seventy percent of preliminary design with getting the environmental document nearly there. So it's still true that towards, if it's not December, then it would be early 2026 or January timeframe where I would have the environmental document completed. Once that is done, then it allows us to start the procurement process of getting the contractor on board. So that's why I said seventy percent January and proposed later in October. So all that time, there is still quite a bit of work that has to go into getting a design-build contractor on board. And then last bullet point, mentioned this a couple of times, that we are planning to let the project in the fall of 2026, actual construction starting in twenty-seven all the way through 2030. That is my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lutaya. Questions? I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a Phase Three coming?
Not chair, no, there isn't. Like I mentioned, we are lucky. Surprisingly, we had, when we started out, the original estimated budget was about a billion dollars. First phase right now is running about four hundred million. So yes, we were originally planning to break it out into a couple of phases, but as I mentioned last year, we got lucky that we got the funding to complete the rest of the corridor vision.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Isa.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say, is there going to be increase then, or well, is it would be an increase to Eighty-Sixth Street, Eighty-Second Street, sorry? You know, traffic-wise with this? Because I think one of the triggers was if there's an increase or decrease.
Yep. I'm Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's a great question. Yes, I, there is quite a bit of information that we kept out to keep my presentation under ten slides. So, yeah, there is quite a bit, because when I mentioned reconfiguring the thirty-five W four ninety-four interchange, so there are few movements that have been eliminated off the highway. And there is this thing that we were timing a box, where the traffic on the local streets is using Penn Avenue, Eighty-Second, Lindell Avenue on the east side of thirty-five W and Seventy-Sixth, so trying to keep them on the local system versus coming onto the highway. So in doing that, yes, we are anticipating to have increased traffic on Eighty-Second. Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Linney.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this presentation. One question, the signal replacements on France Avenue, is that going to be a reconfiguration of the traffic on France Avenue or just signal replacement because the signals are old and need replacing? Or is it a complete reconfiguration of the intersection?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner Lynn. Yes, it's both. Yes, the signals are old, and we are reconfiguring the access to mainly improve pedestrian field, crossing both the south side of four ninety-four and the north side of four ninety-four. Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Lutaya, thank you, and we hope to see you back here in 2030 for the ribbon cutting.
There you go, right? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marone.
Yes, thank you.
We'll move then. Oh, let me just note that that will go before City Council as a public hearing on October thirteenth. Now then, we'll move to item number four, which is a study item, the city of Bloomington is the applicant, to discuss the miscellaneous issues ordinance 2025. Ms. Hespeck with the staff report.
Good evening again. So I'm here to present the annual miscellaneous issues ordinances to you. So for new commissioners, every year, staff puts together a list of ordinances that don't warrant their own project on the work plan. So it can range from small grammar issues to larger changes, but not so big that they need their own project. So this year, we have thirty-three, but what I'm looking for tonight is just feedback on seven of them. So the timeline is study session tonight with you all, and then going to council on September twenty-ninth. And then this will come back as a public hearing for all thirty-three in October, and hopefully go to council in November. So the majority of these ordinance changes are what we call cleanup items. And so I've put some examples on the screen, but typically, it's, oh, this sentence was missing an and. Or for the second one, we had old references to the Airport South District, which is now known as the South Loop. So it's just changes like those, and we're not going to review those tonight. We're just going to review some more of the policy changes. So I have a table of contents in front of you, and because these topics vary so widely, I think what would work best is to go over each change, and then if you have comments, we'll just talk about it when I'm done presenting on it. So the first one is a change to the exterior lighting section of the code. It needs to be updated to specify when lighting plans are required. Not every project that involves lighting, such as like a sign, necessitates a whole photometric plan to be submitted. So we'd be changing that to be able to be exempted by the planning manager. And additionally, for this section, we're proposing adding a statement about maintenance of lighting to ensure that lighting is kept in good repair. Also, if you don't have comments on these, I can move to the next one, too.
Forgive me, Ms. Hespeck, how would you like to do that? Do you want to go one by one, or do you want to?
Yeah, possible.
One by one, sorry, meaning you want comments after?
Oh, no. Just if anyone has comments, I don't think we need like a yes or no on some of these, but if anyone sees red flags or has a question, let me know. Otherwise, I can move on.
Seeing none?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so ordinance Z is allowing multifamily and commercial zoning districts. So the city council, I think back in the spring, endorsed a recommendation as part of the office conversion study to allow multifamily residential uses in certain zoning districts, which are listed on the screen. And so this ordinance would just kind of be putting what was endorsed in that study onto paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a question, this would be allowing multifamily uses with no commercial component, not a mixed juice, correct?
Chair, Commissioner Munster, sorry. So it is combined with minimum levels of non-residential floor areas in these districts. So, yeah, it has to be combined with non-residential.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Hespeck, is this what we studied earlier in the year or last year?
Chair, yes. Tom Ramler Olsen did that study. Ordinance AA, these are a couple different updates to application processes and fees. So as part of the streamlining development project, last year, we established the process of appealing a variance decision by the planning commission, but we forgot to add it to the application processes table. And so the appeal process for that would include a public hearing at council. And then additionally, what you're seeing in the bottom table is there is a process in our application processes table for appeals to certificates of appropriateness, but there's no fee in our fee table. So the fee would be two hundred and twenty dollars, which is mirroring other appeal fee costs. And so this one is cleaning up those two oversights.
Commissioner Isa.
Just a quick question. So there's currently no fee? Is that what it is?
Chair, Commissioner Isa, there should be a fee. We just don't have it written down in there. There are fees for other appeal of decisions. This one just wasn't in the table. Ordinance BB surrounds garage height limits. And so our current code for accessory structures, garage or accessory structure cannot be taller than the principal dwelling. For some shorter houses or ramblers, like we have a lot here, that limitation can be challenging. So staff is proposing a maximum of fifteen feet for accessory structures and garages that are exceeding the height of the principal dwelling.
Sorry, maybe it's because it's math, but I just want to verify it's a total of fifteen feet in height or fifteen feet higher than the main structure?
Chair, Commissioner White, a total of fifteen feet in height. Ordinance CC, again, there's kind of two issues here with plating variances. So first, the planning commission should be holding a public hearing for plating variances, specifically involving deviations from Chapter twenty-two, Division D, rather than the city council. This is already written in that section of code. It's just incorrect in the application processes table. And then secondly, the code does not establish a variance process for plating standards when the deviation relates to other sections. when the deviation relates to other sections other than chapter twenty-two, division D. And in this case, the council would hold the public hearing and be the decision maker.
Nick Rogan?
Okay. Ordinance DD is to remove architectural unity standard for commercial buildings. So currently, the code says that non-residential structures that are on the same site have to match in style, color, scheme, and building materials. Staff believes that requiring this should be removed because it limits design flexibility and creativity. And it also creates an unnecessary burden on the developer or business. So this ordinance is proposing to remove the language that would require that unity.
Today is a great day in the city of Bloomington that we are finally removing this, and I think it's probably just because staff has been tired of hearing me complain about this for the last five years. This is so great. We've had applications come before us where they have to meet the architectural style of an old building, and they come to us with like a beautiful, modern thing, and we say, no, sorry, you've got to go meet the nineteen-eighties standards, and it's awful for the city. Ms. Hespeck, Mr. Johnson, this type of thing is referenced, I think, in multiple areas of the code with like plan developments and things. Are there other references to this where we're still going to get caught on that type of thing, or is this a universal cleanup?
Chair Cookden, we certainly will do that due diligence before we bring the ordinance back to you. I don't think so. I think it's mostly just in the structure design section of code, and as you mentioned, the plan development component, but we'll certainly do due diligence on that.
And we have the Jefferson marching band on standby for the celebration. Any other thoughts on item DD, Commissioner White?
Thank you. I do, thank you, Chair. I do appreciate your enthusiasm. And I largely agree with your comments. I do just want to make sure, though, that we're not, that they're still complimenting the area of the neighborhood and not creating a lot of weird buildings standing out from the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood. So that would be the only concern I would raise. I don't know what the appropriate language is, but I think I'm all for creativity, make it look a little different. Not, definitely not tying it to the seventies and the eighties. But I do still think there are some good reasons for having things not stick out like a sore thumb.
It might be some room for additional conversation here, Commissioner Isa.
Yeah, not start that additional conversation, but thank you, Chair, by the way. Yeah, I think it's just, I just wanted to say, like, I think it's really good that staff is like identifying unnecessary burdens on developers and businesses. Yeah, changing things as found, you know, and so I'm hoping if there is more out there, hopefully there's not. But that could continue to be looked into, you know, and so, yeah, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with the way this is written, as it is now with, without necessary reference to complementary architecture. And the reason I say that is because of what we've seen in the past, and largely on Lyndale is where we've, I think, seen this a couple of times, where we've got a lot of older strip malls that are stuck in the sixties and seventies. And we had a bank and I think some other applications that came forward with us that looked something that looked nothing like that. It was a beautiful, what we would call a jewelry box type thing, just all glassed in and whatever, and we said, no, no, no. You need more brick on that, and you, you can't have that much glass and light coming into your building. And so I personally am not in favor of having any reference to complementary design, and I think we let the market go to town on that. Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair. No, I also agree as well about the complementary design thing, you know, I think that could tend to be like subjective, like what is complementary? Well, in this case, in the Lyndale, it's pretty objective because everything is brick, but I think, you know, initially, like, if you know, start with, if you start with the empty piece of land and, you know, I decided to build glass first now, what would be complementary next is everything else is glass. So it's kind of like, like, who's, who's to start that to begin with? You know what I mean? Just interesting perspective, I guess, but yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I also was thinking about a certain American bank east of Ninety-Eighth and Lyndale when this came up. I'm in favor of the way it's written. I think that there's enough language in the other portions of the code speaking to, you know, kind of class A materials for the exterior of commercial buildings. So I'm in favor of this.
Other feedback? Okay.
Ordinance EE is to remove double public hearings. So double public hearings, which would be when you have a public hearing at planning commission and city council, are not required per state statute. As part of our efforts to streamline development to reduce costs and barriers, staff is proposing to eliminate double public hearings for several applications. And therefore, only having a public hearing at the planning commission. There would still be time for public comment at council, but there would be no notice requirement. The applications that are proposed to not only have a public hearing at planning commission are listed on the screen. There's seven of them. And I'll let planning manager Johnson add comments if he has any.
Thank you, Emily. What I would add to this one is just that, you know, over the last couple of years, especially for members who've been on the board with us during that time, we've been trying to make intentional efforts to kind of streamline our development review process. This is something that has been identified in the past. Not all cities require public hearings at both planning commission and city council for council-required actions. We still need to do some research with respect to some elements of the city charter, and we're working with legal on that. And some of that might also dictate whether this is feasible or not, but we just wanted to take your temperature and take the city council's temperature to see if this is something that they would be amenable to or in favor of, just to kind of breaking it down into kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Basically, it's two weeks of savings in between when an item goes from planning commission to city council if you don't have a public hearing requirement at city council. And so if you're still able to provide that opportunity for public comment, if there are members of the public who are engaged in the process and still given that opportunity, we think that this is an opportunity to reduce a little bit of the time and cost associated with some of these applications. But really, on this one, we wanted to gather feedback from planning commission and city council to see how to move forward.
And Mr. Johnson, just so I'm clear, is it being removed from the planning commission or being removed from the council?
Chair, our proposal would be to remove the public hearing, the formal public hearing from the city council, keeping it with the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Speaking for myself, I have a lot of faith in this commission that we take things very seriously and that we are fair to applicants and that they get a fair public hearing right here at the planning commission without the city council on these types of items. I think the city council will be a lot more interested in this than we are, whether they want to retain that public hearing in front of them or not. But speaking for me, I'm more than comfortable being the final decision maker on these types of items. Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with this in principle. Sorry, sorry, thank you, Chair. So I agree with this in principle. I just want to make sure that there would still be double public hearings for preliminary and final development reviews and then preliminary and final plots. Like, the only things that we would be taking to be single action would be, or single public hearing would be the ones on the screen in front of us.
Ms. Hespeck.
I'll, thank you, Chair. I'll speak to it again. So just to clarify a point of clarification, the city council still has the authority to approve these applications. So we're just talking about whether or not a formal public hearing is required at the city council as part of their action. So it's not to say that the planning commission has the authority to approve these items. It's just that they would hold the formal public hearing. Actually, for some of our preliminary and final development plan actions today, that's already the case. So the planning commission holds the public hearing. The city council is the decision maker, especially if flexibility is being sought. They typically do so without a public hearing at the city council level. So just to provide some procedural clarification.
In the interest of streamlining development within the city, I'm in favor of this.
Commissioner Laney.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Reconfirming, we record all of these meetings, and the city council would have access to view the public hearing that we held if they were interested, correct? So they could hear the comments from the public, just not in, well, they could watch the meeting also. Okay, great. Thank you. I see heads nodding answering my question.
And Chair, Commissioner Laney, we do obviously, or we do, of course, pass along our meeting minutes as well, which also captures that testimony in written form as well.
Commissioner White.
In general, I, I think this makes sense in terms of the use of time and clear processes. I would say that streamlining isn't always the best way to go. And that I think sometimes these processes exist and time between things exists for reasons. And so I do want to be cautious that we are not removing opportunities for the public engage just to make it easier for developers. Because I think that that is an unfair, an unfair situation potentially for the residents of Bloomington who may not have staff or attorneys who are tracking city council agendas or planning commission agendas and, but who would be impacted by decisions that are being made. So I just want to urge caution that I understand the desire to make processes straightforward and fair and economical. But I, I never want to see that happen at the cost of allowing citizens to know what's going on in their city and have a voice in it. So I don't, I'm not saying that this does that, but I just want to make sure we're proceeding with caution and not just streamlining to streamline and make it easier for developments to push through.
I must admit, this is a process that I did not know existed where both planning commission and city council review an item, but only we hold a public hearing. Is, why, if only one body is going to have the public hearing, why wouldn't it be council? Just to save them time?
Chair Cookden, good question. I think part of it has to do with you being the advisory board and the city's planning agency for land use matters. I think most cities set it up that way, that the planning commission is the body that holds the public hearing. Beyond that, I mean, there are some language in the charter, which I referred to, which relates to ordinance requirements that requiring a public hearing at the council level, we're looking into that. It doesn't precisely say that. It's one of those old charter provisions that is a little bit subject to interpretation. But yeah, I think from my study of most other cities, the planning commission does serve in that role in terms of holding the hearing. Part of it, too, I think, is that while the application is under formal review by staff, the kind of wide latitude of staff departments that do review prior to bringing you our staff reports is that it provides us that time to schedule the public hearings. It takes about a month, the internal staff review before it comes before you. So there's probably multiple reasons, and I think one other reason happens to be that the city council agendas tend to be very packed and lengthy. And so I think some cities procedurally like to have the planning commission hold the public hearing because it tends to be quite long, as you've seen in a couple of items recently. So I think it's about managing capacity. I think it's about process. I think it's the planning agency piece out of state statute. I think there's multiple reasons that a city might choose to do that procedurally.
Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give my thoughts on this and kind of give my, I guess, opinion on the streamlining. I think streamlining in this case is good. I do disagree with you a little bit, Commissioner White, on streamlining in general. I think the way I look at streamlining is getting to the end goal efficiently without getting to the end goal as efficiently as possible, you know, so getting rid of any red tape. I think in this, like, if you look at rezoning, for example, a lot of like small businesses benefit from that in the sense where like, let's say they want to expand or just rezone for whatever reason, right? And I don't think it necessarily is like just big developers, you know? And I do think that the citizens, which all of us included, of course, of Bloomington have great way of, there's a great system already in place to have our and all the citizens of Bloomington residents, I should say, Bloomington's voice is heard, like, for example, today, like someone emailed because most likely that individual couldn't make it. So I don't think it necessarily takes away. That's kind of my stance, and I think streamlining is good, and I'm very in supportive of staff lessening the burden, as I said earlier, on small businesses. And yeah, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I'd like to ask about interim use permits. Is the current number of interim use permits in Bloomington greater than two?
Chair, Chair Cookden, off the top of my head, ones that are active, I don't believe so, but I'm just kind of going on the fly here. I'll admit.
I would look to this commission to consider that. I think you all know the interim use permits I'm talking about. And do we want to, do we want to remove that second public hearing for that?
Clarification.
Mr. Johnson?
Chair, Cookden, sorry to interrupt you. Interim use permit approval authority was shifted to the planning commission with the streamlining development ordinance. So unless interim use permit action is appealed, currently it would stop at the planning commission for our current procedures.
So the planning commission has the authority to suspend interim use?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I thought you were talking about the approval or action of a interim use permit. So suspension is, suspension is a different action, and that is that authority does currently rest with the city council because suspension is removal of those rights or approval. So you're correct. I got confused. Now I really feel bad for interrupting.
I don't know. I think I would strike that one. That, that seems to be a very discreet topic in this city right now, and I think I'd want to maintain the current process with the interim use permits. Commissioner Cunningham.
I agree. I think that that's, it's good to have more public feedback, more opportunity on specifically interim use permits.
Commissioner Munster.
If I could just clarify, what is the suspension of these things? Is that a remedial measure for somehow not abiding by the conditions of approval?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Chair Cookden, Commissioner Munster, there might be a number of reasons why a city would choose to suspend a conditional use permit. It could be tied directly to conditions that were adopted as part of the permit. It could have to do with other violations that, you know, weren't explicitly illuminated in the action. There could be a number of different things that could lead to a city taking those actions. But yeah, effectively, it would remove the right to use and operate that site as previously approved. Kevin also wants to chime in here.
Mr. Toski.
Hi there, Commissioners, Commissioner and Chairs, Chair and Commissioners, sorry. That includes revocations, too. It's not just suspensions. So when you're actually revoking a conditional use permit or an IUP, an interim use permit, you're taking it away permanently. So it includes revocations as well as just a suspension. Just to clarify that. And that would come from maybe basically violating the conditions or, you know, not instituting the use within the time period that is allotted for it in city code.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. My position on this, understanding it better, is along the lines of Commissioner White, that, you know, I'm all about streamlining, but I don't think I'm in favor of streamlining at the sacrifice of public testimony. You know, I want to make us a business-friendly city and all the things, but you know, maybe one of these master sign plan or something I could get behind, but something even like rezoning. You know, if you're rezoning a parcel next to a residential neighborhood, that is some of the most high-intensity emotional testimony we get in this room. And we hear all the time that, I feel like I just barely found out about this yesterday, when my neighbor told me. We get that all the time. And so the nice thing for residents at that point is that they get the initial notice from us. Maybe they didn't check the mail for a few days or whatever. They still have that second opportunity at council to have their voice heard. And so, you know, rezoning makes me uncomfortable. I've already said the interim use permit makes me uncomfortable. Even anything in the, you know, the comprehensive plan, I don't know if that has a lot of boots-on-the-ground impact on people's daily lives in the city, but yeah, a couple of these, particularly rezoning and interim use permits, suspension make me, make me uneasy. Commissioner Isa.
Thank you, Chair, for that perspective. I would disagree in a sense. For example, this with the interim use permit, not to get into the two or whatever, few interim use permits out, from what I understand, or major ones at least. out, from what I understand, or major ones at least. It's not that common, correct me if I'm wrong. But then the rezoning aspect, I see more of the benefits. And at the end of the day, I, you know, it's not like we're getting rid of public hearings at all. And I do understand that it may potentially be better for residents that there's two public hearings, right? Like you gave an example, if they missed the first one, they have that opportunity. From what I've noticed with public hearings, most of the time, well, the way the city does things is they do notify the residents in the media area, I think it's like 500 feet. I don't know the exact number, but in the immediate neighborhood, correct? And so most people who do have invested interests usually get it in the mail, just like most of their other stuff. So they either, you know, most of the time, from what I've seen, stop by. You know, most of the issues are our neighbors or people who are concerned. And most other residents are either indifferent or most, from what I've seen, indifferent. So that's why they may not even come to either the first or second one. So I don't think it negatively impacts city residents. That's my opinion, yeah.
Commissioner Linnae?
Thank you Chair. I think, I pushed back a little bit on that. I was, last week, the League of Women Voters held the candidate forum for city council. And the number one issue that came up was people feeling like they didn't have enough communication. And I recognize that the city does a very, puts a lot of effort into trying to share and communicate with residents. And that's great, but for whatever reason, there's a huge swath of residents who don't feel like they're being heard and that they're not given the opportunity. Every single one of the candidates running for city council, including the two incumbents, talked about that issue. And so I think that combined with the fact that the other thing that came through at these hearings was just how much people feel like Bloomington is changing right now. Which I think, given the age of the housing and where Bloomington is development-wise, it is in a period of like pretty significant change. And I think that this might not, as much as I believe streamlining things would be great, I think ensuring that people really have the opportunity to process and take things on board. And particularly in a city where one of the communities that feels the most frustrated right now are sort of the older, original homeowners. And so I think on the rezoning in particular, although they can, they, meaning homeowners, can really push back on rezoning when it relates to residential areas. I do think it's important to hear those voices and for the city council to hear directly from their constituents. And so I think on a couple of these, in particular, I do have real concerns about taking the double public hearing away, particularly the rezoning.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you Chair Cookden. I do want to make one clarification. I really appreciated Commissioner White's comments around providing opportunities and avenues for people to get their voice heard. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Linnae. If you do find this ordinance in the packet, it looks like it's on page 158. I do want to just clarify one thing, that there's a difference between a formal public hearing, which yes, the letters get mailed out to neighboring property owners within a certain distance. We publish the notice in the Sun Current local newspaper, which is the official paper of record, within a certain amount of time, so they are notified. So that's a formal public hearing. What we are proposing to do, and again, this is just for your feedback and the city council feedback, I want to emphasize that strongly. What we would propose to do is to not eliminate that opportunity to, for residents and the public to provide comments to the city council as part of the item. And the way that we would do that is by establishing a new procedure in the table called dedicated public comment. And so what that means is that right now at a city council meeting, if it's not a formal public hearing or even one of your items, it's at the chairs or the mayor's discretion whether or not they will take a public comment. But what we are proposing with this change is that the code would require the city council, in effect, to have to take public comment on an item. It just wouldn't be an advertised hearing using those formal procedures before a public hearing. So I definitely want to hear those concerns around. And I'm sure there's a good retort to that as well, and that's okay. Again, this is about, this is about feedback and feeling, feeling things out with y'all.
Commissioner White?
Thank you Chair and thank you, Mr. Johnson, Planning Manager Johnson. I think that's a really valid point. I would just say that I would hope that if this did move forward, that the public comment or public, I forget what the wording is, that we would make sure that that happened before the council made a decision. I have seen on occasion where, you know, elected bodies will say they're taking public hearing from their constituents and taking comment, but they do it after they've already voted and made the decision at the end of the meeting or something like that. And I would want to make sure that we were being very clear that that was not appropriate in this case. I still have concerns. I appreciate what the staff is trying to do. I appreciate the expense involved with public noticing and things like that. But there's just so much going on in our community and in our state that I think folks, it's real easy to miss these things. And so that's where I guess I think I just, I think right now we're not so strapped for resources that an extra mailing or an extra ad in the paper is going to be the difference between us making budget or not. But it might make the difference between a resident feeling heard and folks being able to help have a voice in the direction that we take this community. So I don't know if you're going to be able to sell me on this one, but I'm open to hearing more.
Commissioner Summers?
Thank you Chair. I want to think a little bit about the person who is coming in this space for maybe the first time with something that's impacting their life or work or Bloomington that they care about. And I think that this is potentially an intimidating space to come into. And potentially, a public hearing at a commission is less weighted for someone who's speaking up for the first time and getting engaged, which I think many of us would agree is like an exceptional thing. And if we create situations where we are changing what comments or public hearings look like at the different meetings, that might discourage people or confuse people. And I think it's most likely to happen in spaces where people are like, I don't really know what this is or what's going on, but I heard that this is happening in my neighborhood and I want someone to hear me because I'm really concerned or I want to ask questions. And the hope is that people are hearing the message always and that we're sending things out. But the landscape of media and what people are consuming is changing consistently. So we're doing our best to notify people. And I think that the second public hearing is an option for people who cannot constantly be aware of what the city of Bloomington is doing, but they live here and they care deeply about their neighborhood and their land and their businesses. So I would not be in favor of something that seems like a different process, but it is kind of the same thing. And we are just exempting ourselves from notifying people about it at this point, without more information.
Commissioner Risa?
Thank you Chair. My perspective is more so like, this from what I understand, at least, from what I know, I guess, this is staff's recommendation, final, like recommendation for us to review, right? And since staff does deal, or is like the first line when like city residents have questions or are maybe frustrated, or staff are the ones that mail out these notifications to neighbors and businesses and, you know, relevant areas of whatever project, right? I think, I trust that, right? I trust that staff did their due diligence and that's why I'm in support of keeping it as is. Secondly, Commissioner Linnae, obviously you're someone with a lot of wisdom. And so I listen very closely to what you said and I, and someone I respect, of course. I think, so is it that residents don't have enough information or not receiving information? Because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the first thing you said is enough information. You know, so I think it's like very, very different if residents are complaining that they're not receiving information. And as you guys are all aware, I was like, one of the only ones, I think the only one that voted on something that concerned residents in the immediate area, not this, like a month, within a month. So my question to you, from what you've seen, and not to stretch this out, but I think it's important to know is, from, yeah, from what you've seen, was it that the residents feel like they're not receiving enough information or they're not getting notified point blank, period? Or they're missing it and they wish for more opportunities?
Commissioner Linnae?
Thank you Chair. Thank you fellow Commissioner Risa. I think that it was both. I think it depends on who you're talking about. I think because communication methods have changed, the impression I am getting is there is a, particularly within the older community within Bloomington, the fact that the Sun Current now is a paid subscription versus a free newspaper. The fact that a lot of communicating for, you know, a lot of younger people is done via social media, Facebook, Instagram, et cetera, which is not necessarily there where they're comfortable. I think there's one category of people who feel like they're not getting as much information. And then there's a lot of people who feel that they're not getting, or sorry, there's people feeling that they're not getting the information. Then there's another category of people who feel that they don't have enough information. I think also to build on what Commissioner Summers said, I think the advantage of the double hearing is coming to the planning commission gives someone the opportunity to see what a hearing is, to see what it looks like to speak. So that then maybe two weeks later, they may have the confidence when it's in front of the city council to make that point or to reach out to their city council member. And to particularly see that the people who sit up here, whether it's the planning commission or the city council, are interested, have questions, want to hear what they're saying. And so I think that as the world continues to change, how we get the information out is going to be a challenge. And we're never going to get everything to everyone. That just is not possible. But I think that these are really big decisions that are being made, especially as Bloomington changes. And I want to make sure that as many people have the opportunity to weigh in as possible.
Commissioner Risa?
With that, I have a question and last thing. For, with all due respect to older folks, is there newspapers still sent out? Or is this included in the Bloomington newspaper thing? I think there's like Bloomington. I always get it. The Sun Current? That's what you're talking about? Okay. Is that included on the physical newspaper?
Can you clarify, Mr. Johnson?
The Chair, Chair Cookden, Commissioner Risa, the Sun Current is the city's official newspaper of record. So under state statute, every city has to establish an official newspaper of record. And that's the record that they publish their public hearing notices in. No, in the Sun Current. Yep, it's a weekly publication. It's not.
It was for a very long time.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that to be free to address that potential issue, you know?
They do list their notices online, but I have noticed that sometimes it lags. So just a concern there.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Just a question for staff. I know we're running late on one small item, but it's important. When our agendas are published, is there any access to those for, say, someone that doesn't want to pay for the Sun Current, doesn't have the internet and doesn't live within a 500-foot buffer of an impacted area? Can they come to City Hall and just ask the planning department what's on the agenda?
Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, they can. And we do have a listserv. We have a dedicated listserv. And I know some of the communication tools that a lot of people are using today is not accessible to everyone. So I do want to, you know, emphasize that that is a real issue. But there are a number of ways that we get the words out about our public hearings and about our agenda packets. You know, whether it's reaching everybody or not, it's not. And typically, most people are not engaged until there is a project that is under construction or proposed to be constructed near their homes. I always advocate to them that those decisions were made five or 10 years ago when the comp plan was adopted and zoning ordinance was updated. But sometimes I don't make headway on those arguments. That's okay. And, you know, agree to disagree. But no, I think the purpose again for a study session on this particular item is we just want to take your temperature on it. And what I'm hearing is that the majority of you are uncomfortable with this change. And that's okay. That's perfectly right. And what we need to do is just ask that question because this is an item that came up in streamlining before. And I know it can seem like we're taking something away. Most cities have one public hearing, not two. So just to clarify that. But I respect the fact that Bloomington has this longstanding process and procedure and that many residents depend and rely on it. So I don't mean to end, wrap up the conversation that way, but I just wanted to say that we've heard you.
Well, we're not done yet. So this process, Mr. Johnson, you talked about was the public comment. What did you call it? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's a, it's... Forgive me Chair. In the language, it means public comment opportunity. So it's dedicated.
Is a public comment opportunity something that's already in our code? Or would this be a new thing for us?
It would be a new thing. So again, on ordinance EE in your packet, it would be establishing number 10 in the legend or table key. C means public comment opportunity. And it would list, it would replace public hearing in all of those application types that we talked about with a C, meaning public comment opportunity. And of course, it would be my every expectation that that would have to occur before the body, the governing body took action, not after. That wouldn't make any sense to me.
And so this public comment opportunity, that leaves it to the discretion of the chair or the mayor in that case of whether they want to hold or open that public comment or not?
Chair, it would not. So the thinking or the idea behind this is that the city council would be required to offer a public comment for rezoning, comp plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, all of those application types.
So they would have to open an opportunity for that public comment? It's more on the noticing side that they wouldn't have to do?
That's correct. They wouldn't, the city would not have to follow its established formal procedures on a public hearing, under state law, which is the mailer to surrounding properties again, the second time. And publication of the notice in the Sun Current the second time.
I like that a little bit better, that we're not taking away an opportunity for people to speak. However, I'm still in favor of going through the mailing process and everything else as a typical public hearing. Any other comments on this one?
So I think we'll share your feedback with the city council. And certainly, per your guidance and the city council's guidance, it may or may not be reflected in this year's ordinance. So thank you.
My feedback is all right. Just make sure. Thank you.
Okay, we have our final ordinance to review, ordinance FF. So I have a map on the screen here. The thicker blue lines are what represent throughout the city minor collector road, roads. And so what this ordinance is proposing is that currently code requires an eight-foot sidewalk along minor collector roads. The city engineer has agreed that this could be reduced to six feet when not abutting a curb. So this amendment is intended to right-size pedestrian facilities along lower-volume roadways, decrease impervious surface, and still provide adequate facilities.
Comments? I was really hoping one of my fellow commissioners who used to be on the Sustainability Commission might have thoughts on this. I'm unsure because like I like it from a sustainability perspective, but at the cost of livability, at the cost of resident experience? I mean, I think having wide sidewalks is extra good for accessibility. It's extra good for kids with their parents. It's extra good for just the lived experience in our city. I'm torn. Commissioner Risa?
I 100% agree, but I was not comfortable enough to be the first to say it. So thanks for that. But yeah, yeah, I think it's, I think the wider sidewalks are good for accessibility. And, yeah, just, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Linnae?
This is, thank you Chair. This is just a question. So what's the width on the non-collector road sidewalks?
Six.
Six. So this would be making them all the same, the same width as the non-collector roads?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Linnae and Julie Long is here too. So she's definitely subject matter expert again on this one. But I will attempt to address it that, you know, we have two classes of collector roadways in the city. The major ones are the higher-volume collector roadways. The minor, still a collector road, but lower volumes tend to be of cars and pedestrians than the major collectors. But yes, currently the standard is eight feet uniformly across all collector roads. And the one nuance that Emily mentioned is that some of them have curb walk. And so you would not want to have a sidewalk that is curb walk to be six feet in width because that is not as safe because it's right next to the street in effect, no boulevard. So that, if you were wondering kind of that nuance of not abutting the curb, that's related to curb walk. But yes, this would reduce the required width of all sidewalk on minor collector roads to six feet. And, you know, as the Chair said, there's pluses on the stormwater management side of things, just putting out more impervious surface. side of things, just putting out more impervious surface. On, you know, potential downstrokes are, if ones are higher volume, then there are benefits to having a wider sidewalk in some of those cases, so. Right now, there's no eight feet, and there's no discretion.
Commissioner White.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just, Planning Manager, thank you, Chair, Planning Manager Johnson just hit on, I think the concern is this balancing act between the usefulness of the sidewalk and more concrete. So, I tend to err on the less concrete is better side of things, but I do understand that there may be sections of this where the eight feet makes more sense because of the use patterns of that particular area, but I think requiring eight feet everywhere doesn't necessarily make sense in terms of the amount of additional concrete necessary.
I think where I'm at on this, the professor I trust the most, she said that we're never going to be able to not use natural resources. We, as humans, need those, so we have to choose where we deploy them and save them where we can. But it can't be that we never use them, because we need steel and we need concrete to live a livable life as human beings. And so, when we think about when and how much natural resources we use, we need to use them in the places where they benefit us as people the most. And for me, then, that ties into accessibility. Accessibility is where I want to use our natural resources, that's where I'm most comfortable doing it. And so, for me, I would not be in favor of this, and I would stick at eight feet to be more accessible. Commissioner Risa.
Yeah, I was, thank you, Chair, I would second that as well, for the same reasons, for it to be more accessible. There's a lot of, there's aging population in Bloomington, people that take motorized wheelchairs, things like that. A lot of this is also, are the longest impact, as far as visually at least, seems to be in East Bloomington with Portland, I don't know, I think that's Portland, but I don't know, 12th, okay, 12th, yeah, and there's, you know, a lot of marginalized, or marginalized community, you know, minorities there, so I would hate to see that get reduced, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Linay.
Thanks, Chair. I think, to kind of build on what Commissioner White was saying, I think what I would be supportive of is more flexibility for the minor collector roads. I think there's a really big difference between some of these roads and how much they're used. I think, I believe the diagonal one there is College View Road. That is, you do not see a lot of people on the sidewalks in general on that road, live just around the corner from there. And so, there are some of these roads where I think you could easily go down to the six feet and not have a huge impact, but then I think others, particularly some of these straight-line ones in East Bloomington, that are much more heavily transited in getting to public transportation and things like that, that I think it would be wise to keep at eight feet. So maybe if there was a way to build in more flexibility on a case-by-case basis, is what I would support.
I could get there, if there was a threshold of doing a, like, a study, of a pedestrian study, that's interesting. Any other thoughts on this one? Sorry, that wasn't the most clear, but...
Thank you. Again, so there's no formal action requested at this time, thank you for your feedback. We will revise the drafts after going to council and prepare formal ordinances for consideration by the planning commission again sometime in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hesbeck, and this will go before city council as a study item on September 29th. We will move then to item number five, which is the consideration of the draft planning minutes, planning commission meeting minutes from August 28th. Is there a motion? Commissioner Linay.
I move that we approve the planning commission meeting minutes from August 28th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from August 28th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 7-0. We will move then to our final item, which is number six, the planning commission policy and issues update. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Cookton. Quick report for you this evening, so just heads up that tonight's meeting concludes the first quarter of this current term of the planning commission, so we'll be sending out a quarterly attendance report, so everyone is up to speed on kind of where they stand with respect to their attendance. Attendance has been very strong, so thank you for that. The second thing I wanted to bring up prior to previewing the next meetings is just that we've been evaluating some of our meeting minutes in comparison to the other governing bodies and boards and commissions of Bloomington, and kudos to Secretary Brown, we do a very extensive and excellent job in terms of the robustness and accuracy of our minutes, but I did want to just kind of preview for you a little bit that we may be tightening some things up a little bit, just to kind of build more alignment with some of our advisory boards and commissions. We definitely do want to provide a good summary and, you know, identify all the important elements of your discussions, just maybe a little bit less line-by-line back and forth, as extensive as it has been. So I just wanted to preview that for you, so it didn't catch off guard for those of you that rely on the minutes. We certainly don't want to leave out the important policy discussion elements, though, so that's our goal, is to strike that balance. Previewing the meetings ahead, so on October 9th, we're looking at a couple of study items. The development application deadline has closed for that, so it's just looking at two study items on that one. Looking at the city's structure height, heights limits map, so we have a map that governs how tall structures can be across the city, so we're going to do a study item on that, that is a work plan project. The engineering and traffic staff will be back on that meeting as well for the annual pavement management program and CIP update, so they'll, Bob Simons, I believe, will be here to provide you that update. And then, October 23rd, the development application deadline has not closed yet for that meeting. We will have a public hearing for the commercial vehicles ordinance, which you previously conducted a discussion about recently, and then we're planning the public hearing for the miscellaneous issues ordinance on October 23rd as well. So that's what's before you currently.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll take an opportunity for any commissioners to bring up an item that was not on this evening's agenda. Seeing none, that concludes this September 18th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission.